For the next two months, it's not a permanent change of policy. May I have a motion to accept, please? A second? Okay, hearing no second, um, the, um, motion doesn't carry and it's considered to be a dead, a dead motion. Moving on to staff and community recognition, Hal, do we have anything?
No, we do not, but I do want to mention, Mrs. Molnar, that I did have some conversations and next year we're going to, um, have each school's student council be present at, at each meeting instead of just the high school like we've done in the past for a little bit of Facet, we're gonna do a rotation, uh, had a couple of conversations today and then I'll, I'll lock that down on which school is doing which month, but, uh, and, and at least that way we'll be hearing from kids each, each month.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Um, public participation at board meetings, do you have anything?
I have no cards and there are no people there.
Okay.
Except, I'm sorry, except Donna Dean, I apologize to you, okay.
Yes, okay, treasures report, Jim.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Molnar. Reiterating part, um, uh, I had sent out through the, the website, the, um, true cash revenues and expenses are tracking as expected, we will be adjusting this next month with the update of the five-year forecast, especially with the S R expenses that are going to be, um, extending the life of the general fund. Um, I wanted to make sure everybody understands that a new business item B is the resolution accepting the amount and rates is determined by the budget commission, um, I just want to make sure everyone understands what this is, it's an annual item, um, once the Lucas County has the final valuation for property and the final effective mileage rates, they do a calculation of how much they expect to collect. Their calculation is through January to December, so obviously I do use this part of the forecast for happy year because our collection is from July first to June thirtieth, so I'm always combining two separate tax years in our forecast, but I wanted you to understand what it is, it's a requirement that we send this back and forth, and I did put it up in the web again and I have it probably here, but just in case, so everybody really knew what it was about, because I know, you know, I didn't know it was just kind of a love language for what it is. Um, and I just wanna, I know this O S B A has been hot on this, I just wanna reiterate that there is new legislation, the governor signed it, um, and schools are no longer able, well, we're able to, but we have to have a board motion before we do it, we don't necessarily get notified, um, when valuations change, as they did in the past, but it's quite a bit of a change and effective in January twenty twenty-three, it'll be much harder to, um, question commercial property valuations, uh, we haven't done it a lot, but we did tend to follow, we had a, a county, um, Lucas County, um, excuse me, lawyer that was watching, and he watches them for all the districts in Lucas County, and if a sales, and they called the sales values and if it looked, um, considerably less than what it was on, which was on on books was less than what the sales price was, they would question it, um, and now we are going to have to go through much more, um, considerably more hoops, and I, it's, it's tough, it pushes more of the liability taxpayers, local taxpayers, is what it ultimately will do, so, um, it is what it is and we'll learn the new rules and provide, write them, but I just want people aware that that did get signed by the governor and it's the done deal, so. That is my report unless there are questions, but.
Hey, man, have a motion to accept the treasures report, please?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
A second? Questions? Roll call?
Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, does anyone have a need for an executive session at this time? There will be one to be into the meeting. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board, all from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda, motion? A second? Any discussions?
Quick question, sorry to propel on A two, she just thought the supplemental people being, um, nine year new, but anything we can see approved for next year, names, but will we improve anything for next year at this point?
No, not supplemental, that's gonna be on in May, is that what you're asking?
Yes, it's a supplemental people without no good, good things going over there.
Yeah, that just means that, um, anybody that had a one-year kind of supplemental or people activities, uh, coaching contract or some activity.
Like redoing any coaches first?
No, we, we not, like I, I was saying earlier, we not renew all one-year supplementals every year at this time, and then we'll rehire them, uh, in the upcoming month or in May.
Because our last button could just, uh, just to take the five chance to something, but we haven't.
I would say so, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, uh, roll call, please?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
Uh, Mrs. Molnar, can I just say a couple of things real quick on, now that the, the motion?
Oh.
Okay, uh, obviously there's some, there's some, uh, you know, there's some names on there, I certainly wanna congratulate all our teacher contracts that we just, um, approved and, and thank the board for that, we have some outstanding teachers and you can see a, a whole list of, of those individuals there, so very excited for those individuals. I do wanna thank Donna Muzett, a teacher that we all know very, very well, been around the district for a long time, very special individual, uh, who's retiring, so I wanna wish her, um, the best in her retirement, and, and, and Dawn as well, Dawn Chaboni's our tech director and has been with us quite a few years now, and, uh, you know, she's here in the room tonight, Dawn, thank you, I mean, we'll, we'll say it again before you leave, I'm sure, but it's official tonight and, uh, as of September, and she was, you know, very, uh, I guess, open and willing to, to, you know, extend it through the start of next year because the start of the year is a big, uh, technology transition time when we roll out things to kids and, and staff and so forth, so I just wanted to mention those, uh, individuals for, for what they've done on behalf of O C S, so thank you, Carol.
Um, Hal, Megan Porter, who is, uh, getting another contract, is, um, one of the out, being voted on for one of the outstanding music teachers?
That is correct, yes. Um, I have that, hold on. I just got the update on that today. There it is. Um, so, um, Megan Porter is our music, elementary music teacher at Star Elementary, and she's currently a finalist for the Tweedle Symphony's Music Educator of the Year Award, um, but she, uh, it's, it's now like a, kind of like American Idol, right, it goes to the public for a vote, so I'm gonna share the link for that out, uh, you know, tonight or tomorrow morning to the, to the entire staff, and, uh, we would encourage you to, to go on and, uh, vote for our, uh, Ms. Porter and, uh, help her achieve that award, we are, we are very excited, uh, to have her in the district, she's been with us maybe five or six years now, um, and, uh, we're, we're excited for this nomination and this potential award.
If there are four people up for the election and she's one of the four, so.
Yes.
Make sure you go on and vote. All right, then, moving on to new business, the North Point Educational Service Center contract, we need a motion to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-one contract with North Point Educational Service Center and to approve the estimated amount of nine hundred six thousand six hundred sixty-six thousand eleven cents with five hundred forty thousand dollars being deducted from state foundation payments for the following programs, preschool teacher aid assigned to the district, itinerary preschool services, preschool assessment O T P T A A P E services to the district, educational assistance interpreter services, A N preschool supervisory services, and other services. May I give a motion to, uh, have that contract, please?
I would just make a note that we've edited, uh, the, I think, the system here from twenty-one.
It should be twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah. Sorry. So it should be, uh, I, I might have made, I might have added that for the twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes.
Two years.
Okay.
Got it, thank you. Okay, uh, motion is made, may we have a second, please?
Second with everything.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Okay, item B, resolution accepting the amount and rate as determined by the budget commission, we need a motion to approve the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission, the resolution has been distributed to the board, may I have a motion, please? A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Thank you, item C, disposal of equipment and materials, we need a motion to dispose of the following, a nine-inch bench top bandsaw, twin C D radio recorder, an overhead cart, a library cart, and about four hundred and sixty-seven books, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
Okay, item D, donations. I need a motion to accept the following donations, Control Miller Ottawa products of welding supplies estimated at the value of four hundred and fifty dollars to the Clay High Construction Technologies Program, an anonymous donation of a thousand dollars to be used for the B P A speeds for going to national competition in Dallas Texas, a Clay retired teachers donated two hundred seventy-five dollars, twenty-five dollars each, eleven deceased Clay High faculty members to the Clay High School Scholarship Fund, may I have a motion to accept these donations, please?
So moved, thanks.
A second?
Second with me.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
Item E, an athletic trip, we need a motion to approve the following high school athletic trip, the boys' basketball to a Cedar Point tournament, June twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth twenty twenty-two, may I have a motion, please? A second?
Second.
A discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cathers?
Yeah.
Item F, disposal of equipment and materials, the items listed in the March fifteenth agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. Okay, moving on to superintendent's report, Mr. Gregory?
Thank you, uh, you can see the statement there on food services, the Oregon City Schools are, are currently compliant with the standards of S B T ten governing the types of food and beverages sold on school premises, so we have to, uh, make that statement. Um, okay, my superintendent's report, I wanna bring you up to speed a little bit and appreciate all of your input to, to get us to this point, we still got some ways to go on our strategic planning, um, if you, if you kinda look down on the, uh, the second couple of pages, I have shared with you some draft, and again, I wanna emphasize draft, this is draft, the, the goals, uh, and, uh, some objectives that we began to put to the goal, so I would encourage you to take a look at those objectives, um, see if they make sense to you, uh, if there's other ideas, uh, we could certainly come together, I, I thought what we do through the, maybe the, the committee structure that we have where all of you are on different ones, we could have a little bit of discussion on this, kind of related to the committee and those types of things as we get into it, unless the board wanted to come all together, uh, again here, I don't know if it'd really be, we'd be able to do that before the end of the school year, I'm not, I'm not sure with everything that's going on here in May, but, uh, so I just wanted to get that in front of you, I've, I've had several meetings with, with Mary and Tom to get us to this point, uh, we met with our admin team once, we're gonna meet again on Friday and go through some of these again, uh, again, it's just getting some language down, so really our next steps then will be to finalize these goals and objectives, uh, and then assign administrative team leads to these and begin to put a structure in place on who's gonna move them forward, uh, and then develop, if you remember Tom and Mary, we talked specifically about the, the action plans, which are the, the real meat potatoes of how you're gonna get the objectives done, uh, and then organize that all into our, our form, so I've already kinda started down that road and, uh, the intention was the July board meeting, that's still acceptable to the board, that we shoot for that July meeting to really kick it off in August, um, you know, where we, we can get it out publicly, those types of things, pretty it up and get it moving, so, so take a look at that when you get a chance, I do wanna thank our maintenance, uh, Mr. Sandwich and our maintenance, you know, we, we've been chipping away since I've been superintendent now for six years on the air conditioning wherever we can, and so we just chipped away a little bit more, uh, installing, uh, four, uh, individual units in each of the Facet and Eisenhower cafeterias, so those, those were hot, hot places on the hot days, and so we've not had air conditioning, we're, we're hoping that those units will, will do the trick, and, uh, they're just, like I said, they're window units, just like you see around the district, but, but again, um, making a difference, and we are, are, uh, planning this summer, as you know, to work on the large scale, uh, air conditioning in the auditorium, Eisenhower and Clay, so air conditioning continues to be a big deal.
Is that the, and the, will that be the end of it, or is the, all the others?
Those are the only, I guess, and, and these will be big questions whether we wanna go there or not, would be like the Facet gym, the Eisenhower gym, gosh, where else? Big, big.
Music band, the band room at the high school.
Yeah, oh, yeah, looking at, at redoing, we have some old units in there, it's not necessarily working that well, yeah, for sure, but, but outside of those big spaces, we're covered, it's, it's, it's great. Purple Star Award, uh, Clay High School has, uh, applied and won that award once again this year, so this is, uh, the award that the state, uh, gives out for your support of the military, so we might congratulate Clay, and, and Star School continues to be a Purple Star winner, they're, they're like a Purple Star winner for, I don't know, what, three or four years and then you can reapply and do it again, so congratulations. Um, you just approved teacher contracts and, um, Mrs. Cathers asked me, well, what is the breakdown of, of our teaching staff and administrative staff in terms of the number of years on the contract, so I thought that was a great question and, and got that information, so as you see, we have a hundred and fifty-seven on continuing, so obviously over half are on continuing contracts, seventy-five on four-year, twenty on three-year, two-year contracts are typically the administrators, the, the first initial contract administrators on, and then we have, uh, uh, twenty-one new teachers that are on one-year contracts, so I just wanna share that with you, kinda gives you a, a sense of where we're at, uh, the continuing, obviously, we, we've got teachers that we felt, um, proud and, and secure enough to, to offer them and approve those continuing contracts, so, uh, there is criteria for that, so once, uh, teachers reach that criteria, they have the option to apply, you did approve a few tonight, and, uh, you'll have a few more and probably in the coming years, so, so, uh, thank you to all of them.
Quick question now?
Yep.
And I don't think any time for questioning with this line, continuing is, I mean, they're left in until they retire, die, whatever, is there any way to get a little, under some extreme malfeasance thing to something?
Well, yeah, just cause is the, is the term that is used in, 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 you know, proven, I mean, again, you would have to work very hard to get just cause, but it's, it's not impossible, I mean, if, if, if our staff is not performing, and I know Mr. Pfeiffer would agree, we've had this conversation a number of times, that they, they need to be improved and, or improved, and, and they can be on improvement plans, and, and if it doesn't improve, that's just cause.
But no, that continuing is for those staff that we, that met up like they're, but.
Yeah.
So another thing we ask them to, we wanna reward them with.
Yes, exactly.
How are they, kind of?
If I can, I'm sorry, if I have any clarification, you know, and I, first of all, no offense, taken at all, all right, um, and I've made this very clear, you know, to, to Hal as a superintendent, um, I'm not a opponent for, for teaching at all, you know, our job as unions to represent the negotiated agreement, not individuals in the classroom, um, when you have, um, someone that has a continuing contract, that's part of Ohio Revised Code, and the application process for that, um, is enshrined in O R C, and if there's, um, different paths that a board of education can go down if they would deny what that, um, what, what that, uh, request would be, um, and that, that shifts the years for it, um, tenure and continuing contract are very different things, what a continuing contract is, is essentially now just simply means that you don't have to reapply for a license after the one year, the, the three years, or the five years.
That's also a state.
That is with the district.
Okay.
All right, you don't have to apply, but as Mr. Gregory brought up before, just because you're on a continuing contract, you still have to go through the full evaluation, um, process, and if you are, you know, struggling so bad as a teacher that you have to be put into the developing category, um, you know, the, the board and the district has the steps in place, you know, to remove a teacher that is ineffective in the classroom, those steps do not change, they don't go away, um, I, I feel too oftentimes we, we have people that see, um, that, that type of contract and they think that it's tenure, like university tenure, and it's not that way anymore, tenure does not exist in the public school system any longer, all a continuing contract means is that the individual does not have to continually reapply with the district, because right now, the district had, and I'm not, I'm not giving away any state secrets or anything, you know, someone on a one-year contract, at, you know, that one-year contract, board of education decides that that person, um, is, is not a good fit for the district, okay, they can choose to not renew that contract, all right, someone that has a continuing contract, has had, like you said, had that awarded to them and are essentially deemed a valuable enough employee that they don't have to keep almost asking for that contract, but they still have to meet the same criteria that a teacher under any level of contract would have to, to be able to maintain employment, and to Mr. Gregory's point also, um, as part of that O test program and, you know, state teacher code of conduct, there are egregious situations, you know, that do serve as cause, and people that are under continuing contract are still subject to those as well.
The, uh, one, two, and three, year one, I can't go on, because, you know, either they, you know, they did not fit for a union process to go through that or the district of districts?
The, the, so teachers typically are hired or are hired on a one-year and then a second, one-year, and then a three-year, and then a four-year, okay, so that's like the sequence, at the end of any one of those, so at the end of the first year, or the one year, or in the third year of a three-year, or a fourth year of a four-year, as long as the, uh, evaluation system is done under Ohio Revised Code, everything, those individuals can be not renewed, that's one difference, whereas the continuing, there isn't that, there isn't that final year, if you will, it's, it's just kind of ongoing, um, but they still go through the evaluation, like, like, uh, as Pfeiffer said, they're still, you know, people understand that, but it is a, a reward for, for being in the district and doing a good job, and I do, I do check with the principals, um, we have in the past not awarded continuing contracts, you know, because, uh, as you mentioned, if, if, if they're in the middle of a four-year, we interrupt it, then they can go down to a one-year, or they can go to a different contract level that doesn't approve them for that, so there's some, there's some other options, we could avoid that because we vetted out ahead of time.
And there's, yeah, no problem, and, and that's easy to, you know, look up to, um, I think it's in thirty-three point, I think it's in thirty-three fourteen, I'd have to go and double check, but yeah, there's specific legal language on, on continuing contract, when it can be offered for qualified sport, and if board of education does not act on that request, then what, um, the moves are after that.
Exactly.
Good, thank you for letting me clarify that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, um, the presence of a hundred and fifty-seven teachers at continuing would suggest that we have a relatively seasoned, uh, teaching staff, correct, because you have to do the one-year, the one-year, the three-year, the four-year, and then the continuing, so I think that's good for us as a district, that we have experienced teaching staff, but it also would suggest that we could be on the cusp of, we have a large number of retirements potentially, so we need to be thinking about just sort of the future of the district and what that means, and just, you know, for folks who might tune in later, just thinking about what does that hundred and fifty-seven mean, both really positive stuff right now and then challenges.
For that, I don't know for districts, but, but you made me think, let, let me do a correlation, though, of maybe number of years in the district, and bring that back to the board compared to just the contracts, because you might have, you know, of those hundred and fifty-seven, you know, you could, you could have all of them or, you know, majority of them with only ten years in, and they could do with us another twenty years.
Sure, you're right, you're right.
Because the number of years, I think, is seven years, plus there's other, there's other requirements for schooling and there's other requirements that go along with it, but, um, so let me do a correlation to the number of years in the district that we have and forget that, I think that would be.
It's like, it's like, it's motion, a lot of people going into teaching, you know, paying down, making the wasn't, however, and to be obvious, you know, so, how does that just fit in the picture for us?
Well, my suspicion would also be that a large number of continuing folks who are in our district tend to have to stay, which I think we should all be very proud of, right? So, um, you know, if that's an indicator, I think it's, you know, really wonderful for, um, particularly our students.
God, and thank you for the question, because it was a good question and, uh, it, it's, it's, it's just good data to, to look at and be aware of, so, all right, graduations just around the corner, so I'm just, this is just a reminder to the board, um, it's on June fifth at the Seagate or now the Glass City Center, so, um, it's at two o'clock, you know, you arrive, arrive at least by one-thirty, you know, I think I'll be there certainly earlier than that, probably around one, and, and, uh, there's no easy way to park, and you park underneath it, if you get there that early, it's not a problem, although there's still some construction down there, and don't forget your, uh, your gown, your black gown, essentially, you know, board members, uh, along with, uh, myself and, and Jim and a few others are up on the stage, and you, you help pass out the diploma, um, cases, and, and so basically a couple of, you'd be on one side, a couple on the other side, and you'll just kinda help out, you'll, you'll get the other, so, it's, it's a very nice experience, it's usually somewhere between an hour and fifteen to an hour and a half, so it's not a super long ceremony, uh, we've got it down pat, so look forward to seeing everybody there.
Hal, we got a, you know, a, and.
As of now, I, as of right now, I am, I've not talked to Jim about that specifically, but there's no limitations on how many we can bring to Seagate, so my guess is we have no limitations.
We'll be taking that, we need to, so.
Ah, I'll have to get back to that. Okay, uh, Performing Arts Center is, uh, moving right along, you can see there's, there's still a lot going on, mostly indoors or inside, um, outside still looks a little rough, we are a little behind schedule at this point, I was talking to Mr. Sandwich earlier due to materials and a few roofing issues, but we think we can make that time up, we hope we can make that time up, the idea was to get it done by July, uh, so, uh, actually, we're gonna be getting together and starting to plan the, um, brand opening, if you will, or the, the ceremony, the groundbreaking, whatever you wanna call it, uh, that'll be sometime this summer, so we'll keep you posted, we're gonna get with Mr. Schneid and Mr. Sandwich, and we're gonna try to get meetings together here in the next couple of weeks, and, uh, Mr. Schneid, I know, has got a lot of big ideas and he wants to do it right, so if he's gonna do it, he's gonna do it right, so, uh, Mrs. Molnar, be ready for something big, and exciting, at the Performing Arts Center. And last but not least, the, uh, I just wanna congratulate, every year we get asked by the Ohio School Boards to nominate, um, businesses that, that we would like to put in their honorary, uh, award, their, their honor roll, if you will, their business honor roll, so I nominated two groups, Mercy St. Charles, which, uh, Mr. Zviski's part of, and the Viewer Group, who, uh, who worked, Mike Rowe, our architect, and, and several others were a big part, and certainly Performing Arts Center and a number of other little projects, and, and I just can't thank them both enough for what we do, um, you know, with, with each other all the time, so I guess I'll give this to you, so, thank you, pass that one to your folks, and, uh, I'll give you the link where it's actually located, but, again, it's, it's a small recognition, but, but I wanna do more of that each year because we had a lot of great businesses that partner with us, and we can have unlimited amounts, I just did two this year, but next year I hope to do more, so with that, that's my lengthy report, and that's how I, yeah, I think, uh, quick, I'll, for possible flag, and then, and then, and then, thank you, thank Charles to do for the school, the community, developing that, you know, to the, to the, to the, to the, to the, to collaborate together, and, and, for, 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 we appreciate it. Yep, awesome, so thank you, Mrs. Molnar.
Okay, any questions, further questions for Mr. Gregory? Okay, moving on to old business, these policies that are listed at the second reading. These policies that are listed on the second reading, they're just basically word changes and we are recommending them for adoption. May I have a motion, please? A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
Okay, support committee reports. Oh, yes.
No report?
Capital improvements.
There was no meeting held this month.
Policy personnel, that's the new policy in the people that we hired this evening? Any academic report?
The academic committee met just a few days back. State testing is now in full swing. It will continue through the end of this month. I am ready spring benchmarking began today and it will run through May twentieth. And what that does is it gives the district an opportunity to see how it's performing with peer groups. AP exams will take place on May third through May fourteenth. So for the luck to all of our Clay High School students who are taking those AP exams. The schedule for the May third Health and Wellness Day will be coming up very shortly following spring break. Demo sessions will start today, thirty-minute learning sessions will last through one fifteen in the afternoon. And the staff can choose the sessions they would like to attend. The Wellness Fair, there will be a Wellness Fair from eleven-thirty to one-thirty. And Ms. Coy has asked us to encourage everyone to participate, everyone is welcome. And that concludes the academic.
Okay, thank you. Legislative meeting is on?
Student. No report.
Okay, student team meeting is on?
No report.
Okay. Okay, board discussion. The new reading pavilion at Ike from the pictures is absolutely beautiful. Congratulations to them for getting it done. There's so many activities coming out at the end of the year. I think just keep your eyes on the newsletters for new scores. Do you have any peace out? Is there any else?
I'll just add that I will be out of town for work on the fourth of the, Monday afternoon.
The, what is it, the seventeenth? Okay, so you're out sixteen, seventeen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else with any comments? Okay, executive session, we go ahead and executive session for number one and number four. Appointment, employment dismissal, and discipline in preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations. No decisions will be made during then and we will dismiss from there. Next board meeting is May seventeenth. And Mr. Zviski, you're not being viewed, got it. Anything else for the good of the group? Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session?
A move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.